All right, I'm calling to order the study session and the regular meeting of Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education. Today is April 25th, 2024. Carolyn, trustee Carolyn Noble is not here, so I will take attendance in attendance this evening is myself, trustee Kumar, trustee Southward, and trustee Van Gemert. All right, first item on the agenda is section A of our study section, study session. This is our board committee liaison and representative reports. John, did you receive my email yet with the trustee Phyllis sent along? An update from his committee since he was not able to be here this afternoon and I was not able to open it, so.
Okay, this from trustee Phyllis.
Just the attachment because he wrote a whole other summary that doesn't need to be read. He summarized it all in an attachment.
Okay, I did open an attachment that has a number of items in it, but at the end it reads summary of discussion from meeting, so I'm assuming that's what's to be read.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'd like to move the section A to the end of our study session. Does that work for everyone? Okay. All right, so that'll give us a minute to try and sort that out. So moving on to section B revisions to make your budget for special revenue new funds.
Good evening. If you call last month, we did bring to the Board of Education an amendment for our general operating fund in March for an amendment. Just like the general operating fund, any significant changes to our special revenue funds do also require revision and formal approval from the Board of Education. We do approve all of our special revenue funds in a combined budget here at Bloomfield. However, as part of, we do account for all of the various special revenue funds and their individual funds, if you will, for their different purposes. Special revenue funds collect revenues for a very specific purpose which are restricted. So here at Bloomfield, we have several special revenue funds. We have our center program which accounts for our county programs, those under Wing Lake, as well as our deaf and hard of hearing program. We also have the International Academy Special Revenue Fund. We are the fiscal agent of the central OCMA campus for the International Academy and record those funds separate of our operating funds. We also have the recreation program that is a fee for service which would record the activities of the community service programs of the district, community recreation, as well as the recreation of the farm and nature center. So just noting that the recreation programs of the farm and nature center are separate from our instructional which would fall under the general fund. Food services, we have our hills activities accounts, so our student activity groups of the school district which were required to be accounted for as a special revenue program a few years back under an accounting pronouncement. And then we also have the co-curricular endowment fund. And I understand that that is a fund we are holding certain dollars related to a donation from the Douche family related to athletics and co-curricular funding. We are only currently allowed to spend the interest earnings on that unless the the board were to take action to utilize those funds for another purpose related to athletics and co-curricular activities. So we certainly can have a conversation around that. The original budget that came to the board in June provided for total revenue of about 24 million. We are adjusting the revenue in combined status to 24.5 million. So there are some variations between the various sources, just like our operating budget. We have local revenue which would essentially be fee for service in a special revenue rather than property taxes. There are some state sources that fall around the accounting for our center program funds, federal revenues, as well as inter-district services or sources related to the ACT 18 collections for the special education programs under our center programs as well. So it's an increase of about $500,000. There is a reallocation between local sources, state sources, and federal sources, and that is primarily due to the food service fund. This, in the current year, all Michigan public school students in grades pre-K through 12 have access to free breakfast and free lunch every day through the Healthy School Meals for All program that was adopted as part of the school aid budget. And we do expect that to happen next year. So we have had increased participation considering all of our students are eligible for free lunch and breakfast rather than à la carte sales. And so that is a reallocation between federal and state dollars there. And the majority of that revenue increase is related to that program. We also have an increase of expenditures of approximately 1.8 million dollars. And I wanted to mention that the majority of that increase is also related to the food service program. So increased activity, increased participation in the program results in increased labor costs as well as increased food service materials, food, milk of the sorts. And then we are also building in to the food service budget about $800,000 of capital outlay related to the food service program. That is a purposeful spend down of the excess fund balance. And then, and so that would be a $700,000 increase from the original budget there. I did want to mention that there are certain costs built into that $800,000. By approving this budget would make the assumption that we are able to reallocate certain funds incurred last year from the the bond fund and walk-in coolers at two of our locations. That would allow us to do a transfer of the activity to the food service fund to spend down those excess funds, but also open up the bond fund budget for other purposes. But that is predicated on approval from the Michigan Department of Education that we are currently waiting on. So I did want to point that out, that the budget was built assuming that they will allow that transaction to happen. In the event that that does not come to fruition, I will adopt, make an adjustment to this for the June, for the June final budget. And then we will need to revisit our excess spend down plan as well. So you can see here that the end of the year fund balance all combined was planned to be about 8.4 million. And with those changes, we are proposing an unfund balance in our combined special revenue funds of 7.4 million. So on that, I can open it up if there's any specific questions around the funds. The food service had the most significant changes, not too much notable significant changes in the other funds and their activity.
So we've seen our fund balance decrease by about a million from what we had originally budgeted. So is that cause for concern? I can see the food service fund expenditure went up by about a million.
Yep, it's, that's really all related to the food service fund. Over $800,000 of that spend down was a planned spend down. It's required technically in the state of Michigan. We only can carry an average of three months of expenditures of food service expenditures in our food service fund. And we have exceeded that. That is not unique to Bloomfield. That is very common across the state. Given during the pandemic years, we had a year and a half there of federal funding from a food service lens increasing our participation that really built up these fund balances. And then we were tasked with lots of money. And so we do have to have a plan in there. And most districts that I have seen have strategically used that fund balance to put in some capital improvements to their food service programs. So $500,000 of actually, I think even a bit more than $500,000 of it is related to, there were two walk-ins that, and Keith, you might be able to speak to this better than me because it actually already happened prior to me being here. Two walk-in coolers that combined were over $500,000 and some various other food service equipment. So we aren't building it into the structure of labor. But rather than a very strategic spend down on equipment that some of it was even planned in the bond and can free up up sources in the bonds as well.
It comes through our FFNE and Dave handles our FFNE.
Yeah, and so a couple of examples.
We did elementary furniture, that award last time. Cafeteria furniture is going to be allocated from this fund. And so once we get that reimbursement, that'll come back into that, to the bond fund. Just, that's just one example, but it's that kind of stuff. So middle school, same kind of thing.
You can only use the food service money for equipment. You cannot use it for construction. So we couldn't, we couldn't put contractors in there to paint, redo flooring, redo the kitchen. But we can purchase serving line equipment, walk-in, walk-in freezers, walk-in refrigerators, ovens.
Is the state allowing us to go back in time or just to approve the?
It is. So the transaction had it happen in a timely manner. And I understand with, we're all aware of the transition in the business office that originally the plan was, we would have, I believe it was dual approved, if you will, that we could spend it out of the bond or food service in the event of excess food service fund balance. And, and that happened. We had excess fund balance, almost $800,000 recommended by the MDE that we had to spend down. The journal entry of the transaction, if you will, the activity closed out last year and it closed out to our financial statements under, as an expenditure to the bond in 630 of 2023. So technically, you cannot do a transfer from food service to a bond fund. Now, the transaction is allowable had the transaction happened in a timely manner. So we're working with the MDE and our auditors to determine if we could actually do a prior period of, prior period adjustment, restate the beginning fund balance, not carry it through the current income statement, recognizing that that should have happened last year, reimburse the bond fund for the dollars. So it becomes a bit more complicated in terms of the transaction that needs to happen from an accounting lens. And then the presentation would be different than we would normally expect to see. So if the MDE and the auditors are in agreement with it, then we will move forward. The transaction was approved as part of the excess fund balance spend down last year. The transaction was approved by the board. It's on the pre-approved MDE list of equipment that is allowable. So all other things, you know, are fine. We're just waiting on the blessing of this. So, yeah. But no other significant changes to the other activity in the fund, so of the other various funds.
Now, what about the IA, right? It seemed like it got re-based line, what funds from the beginning of the year to the end of the year?
So the IA, we do adjust the revenue based on the current foundation allowance, the target foundation allowance for the state of Michigan, which is $9,608. And we have the ability to add some equity of effort cushion to that budget. And so currently, the participating districts are paying 108% of that 9,608 based on the current enrollment. So just like our operating budget, the inter-district sources, so that is the tuition from the participating districts, is going to fluctuate and ebb and flow depending on how many kiddos are participating in the program. So we have adjusted the revenue, taken down the local source revenue a bit. So that was really an adjustment to inter-district source revenue based on participation as well as the local source, which is some recreation revenue out of enrichment, out of that fund to actual planned activity. And then we've adjusted our expenditures as well. But the expenditures really haven't changed the staffing footprint on, you know, along with that fund hasn't changed all that much compared to last year. So you can see that the total expenditures were planned for 6.0 million. We're planning on 6.6 million. We are planning on building that fund balance up to about 4% to 5% of expenditures. We are aware that this is a special revenue fund. If there is a deficit, it becomes a deficit to our general fund. And so given that this is a county program essentially that we're the fiscal agent for, we wouldn't want to bear the burden of that on, on Bloomfield's general fund. So this is strategically build out 108% to bring that fund balance up to provide funding should any unforeseen changes in staffing occur under that program or other expenditures. I know that we have had discussions about the need for some one-time expenditures coming up in the near future related to updating their technology in that program. And so that is strategic. We do not plan on going much above that 5%, but next year's will be updated based on our assumptions for next year's fund balance as well as building in some cushion of 110% equity that will give us some flexibility that will amend in the fall and pull back on that from the, from the participating districts if necessary. But it allows us some, some flexibility if we have less enrollment in the program to still cover the costs of the program. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. And then recreation and community services, the next, well now that the fund balance came down by almost 400,000, is that a cause for concern?
So the fund balance didn't come down because of a current year change. The beginning of the fund, the, it related to the activity of '22, '23 that did not close out as planned. So I'd have to go back to prior year activity that closed out in compared to last year's final budget to see what wasn't planned for last year. So the end of the year fund balance last year was planned on being relatively higher than what happened. I do know that there was a reallocation last year of certain staffing costs for the farm employees. And so it, it would feel right to me that if the budget didn't account for that, but we did a reallocation of certain positions that were more recreational in nature, that the cost got moved to the farm. The budget wasn't updated, but this year's budget does reflect that. So that's, that's really just truing up if you can see the, the, the end of the year fund, it, it just didn't align with, with last year's activity. And then I will also say that from a local source revenue, I do understand that there was some licensing requirements and adjustments that happened at some of the Farm and Nature Center summer programs from last year that have been addressed. And we should see an increase in our revenues again for those programs coming into '24, '25.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Just that this will be board business item C later this evening. So you'll be voting on approving the mid-year budget revisions. We are not planning on any presentation at the next session of the meeting.
Got it. Thank you. Sure.
The recreation and community, the, the expenses listed as community service, what is, what is, like, what is that really?
So, so community services, that really, so the, you would expect to have all, almost all expenditures as a community service. So the, the MDE requires us to report our expenditures in different departments, if you will. Under the general fund, you would expect to see instruction and support service. Under food service, food service. But community services are programs that are benefiting the community and not necessarily the instructional program. So these are all food, these are all fee-for-service programs, all recreational activities that are not tied into the instructional and core educational programs of the district. So like, so think of camps, summer programs.
The after-school programs.
Winter park.
Match key, daycare, preschool, all of those would fall under the community.
And preschool, we record under a general fund.
So my question is, are those expenses like employee costs or, because it's under the expenditures?
Yes, it could be, it could be any, there would be employee costs, benefit costs. So if there is a recreation manager under, then it's under the bucket of a departmental budget rather than by abstract showing you how exactly we're spending the money on the program under community service, which would break it down. It could be a third-party service if we're bringing in, you know, a service to run or another entity to run a camp. It would be supplies. So anything that is tied to a community recreation program, whether it be people or things, would fall under that bucket of community services.
Okay, and so I know trustee Kumar indicated that the fund balance decreased, but in, in reality, there just wasn't as much revenue over expenses as we, as we had expected, but there was still revenue over expenses.
Yes, yes. And, you know, and that is three different programs that all roll up into that umbrella of community recreation. It would be the community recreation that our athletics department essentially kind of tag teams and oversees. And then there's recreation related under Bowers Farm and Alan's program as well as the nature center. And so those are all different cost centers within that program, drawing on that fund balance.
So it looks like revenues were not as high as projected, but costs were higher than projected. So does that indicate a need to reprice those services?
No, that, I don't think so. As I mentioned, the primary reduction in that revenue was related to some licensing. I had a discussion with Alan Giroz from, you know, director of the farm and had noticed that the original budget for certain summer programs last year were, was higher. And when I say last year, it's actually last calendar year, but July and August that falls into this fiscal year. And there had been discussions around ensuring that we had certain ratios along the lines of recommended licensing and in the interest of the nature center and the farm. We were making some changes to that, which brought down then the ratio of how many kiddos we could have in the camp. And there is a plan to realign that for this summer. So I do expect this is a one-time dip and that we will adjust our revenues for '24, '25 to account for that. If you have any specific questions about that, I certainly can circle back with Alan.
One last question for clarification. So on the document, there's seven pages. The first page is a collection of.
It's the combined.
Or the following six pages.
Yes, and then that, and so they would all roll up because we do present that as one combined budget that will go to approval to the board subsequent to this meeting. But in the interest of transparency, showing you the activity of the varied, various different funds we do have.
Got you. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this topic? All right, thank you, Candace. Appreciate it. Moving on to. Moving on to C, first reading of board policy 5002, budget planning and adoption.
We're not going to let Candace off the hook yet. She's still up. I'll let her talk through this policy change with you. We have presented this in, I think, all, in two of our subcommittees in both the strategic planning as well as the finance committee, but have another conversation with it here.
Yes, we, as part of, if you called during many of our one-on-one small group budget discussions when we were amending the general fund, we had discussions around board policy 5002 related to the budget planning and the adoption. And we noticed there was some marriage, if you will, between the adoption of the current year upcoming budget or the ensuing year's budget. So when we're talking now, in another month, we'll be bringing the '24, '25, but also tying that directly to what might five years look like from now based on projections. And so we had a lot of thoughtful conversation around that, that, that tying that adoption of the upcoming year when we are in a space where we are so dependent on a per pupil allocation from the state, we may not even know what our per pupil allocation is. We likely will not know coming into next fiscal year, let alone making assumptions going forward to five years ahead. The dependency on that also, that most of our collective bargaining agreements don't span the course of five years as well. And so making assumptions around what our future payroll costs, our future alignment might look like are not necessarily very reliable. That said, we do recognize that there is best practice and, and in terms of doing more short-term projections, two to three years ahead, so that we can appropriately plan for the next, you know, two years going forward with more reliable information, but not marrying the adoption to what would maybe, best guess if I had the, the easy button, if you will, to five years ahead from now. And so there was discussion about the board's temperament of offering, you know, making a change to that board policy to still retain the target fund balance of 15% to 20% of expenditures, still acknowledge that we will be doing projections for another couple of years out. But those, those forecasted projections will not tie directly to the upcoming budget for this coming school year. And so what this policy adoption or amendment to the policy does is changes the language and opens up some, some flexibility around that while still maintaining fiscal responsibility and a fund balance percentage that we're comfortable in terms of the sustainability of our fiscal operations of the district.
Do you have a side-by-side of this in the attachment? We have the current and the proposed. Do we have like a, a red line that shows exactly where the changes are?
I'm actually thinking too that what, after this first reading, will it be consistent with what we've done with other policy updates? So I will do the red line document. And then, since we have a few board members here tonight missing them, we'll, we'll allow them the opportunity to ask questions and then we'll get those answered before we bring it back to the next meeting.
Just the initial socialization of it. Socialization, all right.
So this sounds like our policy as it is and then a red line and this will be three paragraphs.
Okay, perfect. That would be helpful.
And we'd like to take this to May for a second reading and a vote.
Okay.
So would the gist of it be that we're going from a, what used to be a five-year forecast to a three-year forecast?
Is that the, is that the bottom line?
We will be going to a three-year forecast. However, the adoption isn't necessarily tied to what those two years look like. So if two years ahead, we make assumptions based on our current staffing structure and our current, our current collective bargaining agreements would suggest that we're dipping to, say, 14, 15%. It wouldn't stop the board from not approving the current year budget, but it puts us in a position of adequately planning going forward without making assumptions that wouldn't necessarily hold true. So it, it doesn't marry the two together.
Okay. I'm going to need some time personally. I might schedule some one-on-one time with you to try and go into this a little bit more because I think I'm going to need that.
Okay. That is fine.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not positive about the language. And I've looked at it a couple of times since I first saw it. And I haven't come up with an alternate, like an alternate, so. But I do think that there might be like a tweak in the language that might make me feel a little bit more comfortable. So I'll think about it.
Perfect.
So Megan, how about if I send the red line version out to the full board? And then could this be an agenda item on the upcoming committee? So we'll have a couple of weeks. So we'll have a couple of weeks for people. And then there's another couple of weeks before our next meeting to see if
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on this one? Okay, moving on to section D, revisions to 2001 AR, admission and enrollment, foreign exchange students.
So I'm gonna have Sarah speak on that little background though, too. This is an administrative right, so there isn't a necessary, a vote from the board. So the administration is bringing forward the changes that we would like to make. And then those changes would be enacted 30 days after today.
So there's a link, if you, that fancy where you link to, you link to, you link. Essentially, there are two different types of foreign exchange student visas. There's an F1 visa and then there's a J1 visa. The F1 visa, the way that I have gone and talked, spoken to people, like that is your Formula One car, all the bells and whistles are a part of it. There is tremendous student support with an F1 visa, both on selecting of the students, also placement, but also support once the students are here in the United States. The J1 visa is, does not provide the supports, does go through an organization, but the hands-on local support is not as prevalent as would be, we would like to see for our students. So in speaking in other area districts around here, they have all gone to only accepting the F1 visa students instead of F1 and J1 as we are currently written. So what we're asking for here is just a change to say that we would accept F1 visa students and that the application come through me so that I can do a second vetting rather than the high school principal or through my position. And that's really the biggest change. We have two students this year who are J1 and they both have left us recently.
And do we typically have students that, sorry, I remember. Sorry.
That's okay.
Repeat, my first question was, how many students do we have on the F1? And then traditionally, how many J1, sorry? And how many students do we typically have coming to the district that are J1?
So generally, our students are F1. This year, we had two J1 students that came through us. And then, but just this year, we joined into the Oakland Schools Consortium for exchange students. And so anyone who has an F1 visa applies to the Oakland Schools Consortium. And then if they indicate Bloomfield Hills, it comes to us that way. So this is, that's a second vetting that will come to us. So once Oakland Schools has vetted them and the organization, then it comes to us to accept. That's what the F1 visa helps to provide for us. There's also additional funding that comes with an F1 visa versus a J1 visa where we only get the, rather pupil FTE. J1 visa has an additional fee that comes with it as well.
So is there a reason why we, am I, so, so is there a reason why we are moving to, because I see J1 is crossed off, but it's not read, so I don't know.
Red is new, crossed off is what we're striking out.
So I'm guessing that that means that we're requesting that we no longer accept J1 students?
Correct.
Because?
Because they don't have the support here that makes them successful in our schools versus F1 visa, which the organizations that they go through are much more supportive about the students when they are here.
When you say support here, you mean in the state or in the
In the United States. Students are supported strongly by the district itself, but we need to have some more wraparound, we are more comfortable with more wraparound supports for those students.
So is it fair to say that J1 is for students who are funded by their nation that they're coming from?
No, J1 and F1 are both funded generally by the families or someone else. But J1 visas, the organizations that offer J1s are much less expensive because they offer much less wraparound services. F1 are more expensive, they offer more wraparound services for the students, and also the district gets an additional fee on top of the FTE.
Can you give us an example of what some of those wraparound services look like? Like some that exist?
If a student is experiencing academic difficulty, there is a field representative who will come to your school to help navigate that with the host family at the school and the student.
Anything else other than academic support?
They do everything, like they have socialization exercises. They do a really strong vetting of the placement. Generally, the F1 students are placed in a home that has other students in it.
Oh, it's, okay.
So there's, like right now, anyone could take in a J1 student. You don't have to have students in the district, you just have to live in the district.
Okay.
F1 is going to say, we're gonna place you in the house where we want you to feel the whole American family experience. You're gonna be placed in a home that has also students in the home.
Okay.
As well. They have more socialization where, so generally, F1 will have areas. So in this area with Lake Orion, Rochester, I'm just saying, put it like, Lake Orion, Rochester, Bloomfield Hills and Birmingham, they would have once a month gatherings of all of the students that come from that organization to meet, to gather, to talk to each other, to be able to have that conversation along with their families as well. So there's that whole other piece, and it's a nice way to check in on and be a part of. With the J1 experiences that we have had, it's, it might be a phone call or a video chat. One of our field representatives this year was from Minnesota.
Oh, wow.
There's no one.
Local.
Local.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, I learned a lot.
Yeah.
About the difference between the two.
And historically, how many international students have we had?
It ranges between six to 10. Sometimes, sometimes we have had more, but usually it's six to 10 at most. And again, the majority of them have been F1. On occasion, we'll get a J1 student who is coming to live with a relative, but that also presents a problem. Like that's not always how that's supposed to work either. So I think it allows us to stand back and be, F1 is vetted on all ends and feel comfortable that our students are supported.
Okay. Any other dialogue, Michelle?
Just so you know, this, I came to get to this decision. I spoke with at least four other districts that bring students in and they were all F1 only for the same reasons as about the wraparound supports for the students.
So have the students that, the two students that we have had or the ones prior to now, have they just not been successful in our district?
I don't wanna talk about that in a public forum, but they did not receive the supports that we were hoping that they could have for them to be successful with us.
So I guess it's, I don't know. So I guess I'm really trying to get to the root of why we're making the decision not, besides support that is individually. I guess I'm trying to understand what we mean by they're not getting the support outside.
Safety and security of the students are our number one priority. We would wanna make sure that a parent feels our student is coming to Bloomfield Hills for an experience, that that experience is strong. And when it's outside of our control, we're not gonna be a part of it.
So from what I'm hearing, you say the decision is also connected with safety and security. Just trying, I'm just trying to pull it all out.
Yep, that's fair. F1 has, that's the wraparound support. The safety of the security of the student is paramount and there are local field representatives to ensure that.
Okay.
So was the catalyst for this change our most recent experience? Or have we had similar experiences prior to?
We have not had that many. We only took, since COVID, we've taken fewer students. And then this is the first year that we've really kind of robustly reopened. So that's the first one. The second one is in prior ARs, we had it F1 only. And then only we had named certain names somewhere in our ARs during the COVID time that was changed to F1, J1 without recognizing what that difference was. So when we dug a little bit further, we found out what that was and we are reverting back to a previous, I can't tell you what year the AR was, but there was a previous AR that had F1 only and then certain named organizations.
Our college students, so I mean, they don't have the same kinds of concerns. I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, any other discussion on this topic? No, okay. Um, what? Um, all right. Moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, that was the, that was the end. All right, all right.
Back to 2A.
Right, right, so that was the end of the list prior, coming back to 2A. Okay, all right, coming back to 2A. Keith, if you don't, we don't have any of our committee liaison representatives here. So do you feel comfortable providing, since you're the one who's been able to attend each of the meetings, do you feel comfortable providing an overview of each of the?
I can do the strategic planning and the finance and operations one. And I'll be prepared to do the curriculum instruction.
Perfect.
We actually talked about these conversations that we just had, the mid-year budget adoption, the reading of the policies. We talked about policy in both of those subcommittees. And then the last would have been the foreign exchange students, which we talked about in the strategic planning. We did some bond updates in the finance and operations committee. We are in the process of designing out our bid pack 11, which will be our 25, summer 25 work in the elementaries. We need to get that out to bid relatively soon. We've designed IA front entrance, we've met with that team. And I think that's actually looking pretty good. I think we're getting ready to build further documents out on that one and get that out and going. And then the wellness center is actually a little bit ahead of schedule right now. And they're really kind of moving over there much faster than we thought and expected.
Yeah, I can see that from the street.
Yeah.
I've received a lot of calls, what are they doing over there? I'm like, wow, that's really going along quickly. So that was finance and operations.
That was, yeah, finance, that was kind of a combination of the two. There was a lot of carryover from one to the, or crossover from one to the other this week.
Right, okay. Do any of the trustees who've been able to attend any of these sessions have anything additional to add on those two topics? Anything you wanna bring to light or? Okay, all right, then Todd, if you don't mind giving the curriculum and instruction committee update?
Sure, we've been able to meet about three times since the last board meeting. During the April 1st meeting, that we had an opportunity to invite curriculum associates in to present on iReady. We were able to look at some of the instructional tools as well as the potential of the assessment platform that iReady offers. We also had a chance to ask a lot of questions during that session. And then the follow-up meeting on the 15th, carrying that conversation forward, we were able to consider different ways that we might use iReady. We're currently investigating in 35J, a new literacy grant that we awarded recently. Whether or not we'll be able to submit that in that budget, be able to perhaps move our iReady pilots into really utilizing that as a progress monitoring tool as well as an intervention instructional tool in those tier two and tier three programming supports that we have. So that's still unknown until that budget gets submitted and approval. And we would get approval from MDE for that. In our last meeting on May 5th, we had a chance to dialogue about PYP at the elementary level and as well as some of the feedback that we received from, excuse me, from the ID for the reauthorization and some conflicts that sit in there with the priorities that the district currently has. And then I believe our plan is to come back to that conversation in future meetings.
President Hill, if we could just go back to the finance and operations committee and strategic planning committee updates.
Sure.
Maybe Keith and Candace can give us an update on the millage discussion?
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
Before we move on, I did wanna say, I think it was two meetings ago for the instructional committee, that there was a presentation from iReady that I went into fairly skeptical because I, I like to maintain like the same testing structure how, and actually, it was a sales meeting and they started off real salesy. And I was still skeptical, but by the end, like of that presentation, I did feel that iReady is a, like, potentially a better product than the FastBridge product.
If we do end up moving to like a large scale, I'm glad you brought that up because if we do move to a large scale use of iReady, it would replace FastBridge at that point. So right now, we're investigating whether or not it would be fundable for iReady in tier two and tier three. And then we can come back and talk about that for future use. And, or maybe perhaps a different funding opportunity appears that it sort of has been that way this year. There's been some grants that have been moving pretty fast out of MDE. So, you know, we'll always keep our eyes open for what potential might be there.
How long has FastBridge been the platform?
I feel like that's four to five years. I'm remembering bringing that before the board in a virtual meeting. So that was probably either at the end of the 1920 school year or maybe in the 2021 school year, probably about four years, maybe five.
Looks like NLEG or something like that?
NWA.
NWA.
NWA was before that, yes.
Something, yeah, there was, I thought it was four letters.
And when is the decision on that gonna be made?
Well, right now, we've made the decision to move forward with tier two and tier three for progress monitoring and intervention tools. But we're on hold until we hear back from the grant. And we submit the budget, the deadline for the budget is either May 2nd or 3rd. It's next week, early next week. And it probably won't, they've been fairly responsive getting back to us pretty quickly. So I would suspect that we'll know in a week or two whether or not that gets approved through that grant source and then we'd be able to use it at that point.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if I asked, presented this question to you all during that day.
Thank you.
We need signers.
Cory told me to leave it on. Implementation, so if we, if this is something, we get the grant, this would not be a product that, what's the phase out of the current process? How would that work?
Our preference would be that we are implementing it before the start of a fall. So like during the summer, that we would close one assess, if we're doing it, if it's gonna replace FastBridge, it would be likely much easier and it would also keep our data more reliable to be able to start and finish the school year with one type of assessment rather than switching mid-year. So if we do make a switch, it would either likely be this summer or next summer. So, you know, we'll wait to see.
How effective will the training be for the teachers?
Well, we would ask iReady to do some of that training for us, but we've already been doing some of the training with the pilots in each one of our schools, each one of our elementary schools. So it's hard to say right now because I feel like we have a pretty significant amount of staff who have been able to utilize the tool for a while. But we would certainly put that in front of, in front of our staff. We might even do that just school-based, perhaps during like one of their staff meetings or we'd work with the principals on how best to press to bring that in
Okay.
in order to support that. But if you've been using Fast, or FastBridge, you know, you would be familiar with that type of assessment, but it would, you know, electronically, when you're in the system, obviously, everything is in a different place, so. And there's a lot more capacity within iReady, so there would be more tools that would take some time to learn.
Okay.
Now, what happens to all the last four years of FastBridge data? Is it just getting thrown away? That you're gonna rebase line everything with a new system? Or are you able to gather some of the test data from FastBridge as you're building up your database in iReady?
Yeah, we're able to, because as we go through the FastBridge cycle and each one of those, every time we go through a testing cycle, we pull that data into our own database, so we'll always have that data. We won't, we wouldn't necessarily lose that. And then we would have to be aware that we moved from one assessment tool to another assessment tool, but both of them are norm reference. So we would expect that it wouldn't be too much of a difference from a high level. The real difference is how it can do a diagnostic, can be much more specific. So wouldn't necessarily be a difference on the large data that we would be able to view? would be able to view, just like we see a lot of predictability with M-Step each year. But rather with, with M-Step, it's very difficult to get into a diagnostic method where you're really looking for a skill set that you're trying to intervene on. So that would really be the difference that iReady, at least our impressions are, that we'd be able to, to dig in much deeper for a diagnostic and as well as provide back instructional tools, perhaps as, as next steps and recommendations. That's why it's probably, most importantly, as we move forward into next year, to continue to use it in our tier two and tier three programmings, because that's where we're seeing the, the most value. Where FastBridge doesn't necessarily get to a diagnostic like that. But it does give us very good overview data as we're progress monitoring throughout the year.
Thank you.
So, and I don't, I don't understand. So if we, if, if the grant is added, if we don't receive the grant, then what? Is that, I mean, I don't, is that even a thing? I don't.
We'd come, we'd come, well, we've already been awarded the grant. So we're looking for the budget to be approved. And then each line item within that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We've already submitted for the grant and have been awarded the grant. And then the next step is to, everything that goes in the grant, you submit a budget, and then we'll get feedback on each one of those areas. I would suspect that iReady will probably be approved, but we don't know that for sure. So we'll, we'll wait to see how that works.
The grant we talked about, yes.
Yes, 35J.
Yes. Going back to connections now. Thank you.
John?
Stalling this meeting. But I do have an old FastBridge question. Someone indicated to me that in other districts, they link the FastBridge data to the parent portal. Is that some, is that a thing?
Yes, FastBridge will produce a parent report.
I, I understand the paper report that we get home, but I, I was told that in some districts, they link that paper report. So it's accessible on the parent, on the, the parent portal. Is that?
David's looking.
So, just to, not to pause things, someone asked me a while ago, and I guess I didn't really have like a good time to ask the question.
I would have to go back and, I'd probably have to go back and ask, ask David if, every districts have different type of data platforms. So some might be using Power School, others might, so depending on the capa, capabilities of being able to upload that data might be a difference. But I know David's searching over there on his phone.
Yeah, that's a good question. It's a great question.
Just a, if it's possible, it would be great for us to be able to put that in there. Okay.
And it was May 2020 when you?
2020, okay, all right.
All right, any other discussion on the curriculum instruction? Then we can come back to the question about the millage.
If you recall back at the, the last time we had our stud, I think the last formal study session was back in February, when we first brought to, to the board and the administration team here, discussion about the opportunity to bring our operating millage renewal, as well as our hold harmless, which is also another operating millage renewal, to the Board of Education for approval in the upcoming months. Now we're here at this point to take out to our voters for approval, whether that be in August or November. We, with the upcoming general election, we do have the opportunity to put a renewal of the operating and the hold harmless millages, which are expiring in December of 2025. So we do have time. But by putting them on the proposal to our voters in August or in November, it gives us the opportunities to save a significant amount of dollars to the school district by getting that on either the primary or the November election. And so, we have entered, we've had numerous discussions with our bond council, with our financial advisors, PFM, between the finance and operations committee, as well as the strategic planning committee to put forth a proposal for the August 6th election. So there's two parts of that. It's the renewal of the 18 mil non-homestead operating millage that is on, again, non-homestead property. So not our principal residences, essentially our businesses, rental properties and such, as well as a renewal. So these are not new tax rates to the community of our current hold harmless millage, which is currently 5.1338. And that does go to our principal residence or against our principal resident property. So some history around that, back in 1994, with the passage of Proposal A, which is the current funding mechanism for school districts in the state of Michigan. All Michigan school districts were expected to levy a non-homestead operating millage of 18 mills to receive their full foundation allowance. So what that means is our foundation allowance, so this year, our foundation allowance is $13,443. The target foundation allowance for the state of Michigan is 9,608. We have a difference of $3,835. That is our hold harmless two that I'll speak to in a moment. But what that means is that we do not receive the entire value of that $9,608 from the state of Michigan. We are required to levy 18 mills to, on our known non-homestead property in order to get the, receive the full value of that. And then the absence of that levy or an approval of that levy, we will still not continue to receive the full value of that 9,608. Additionally, when pass, with the passage of Proposal A, back in 1994, certain school districts, and I say certain school districts are a handful, about 43, I think to be exact, that had combined local revenues, property tax revenues, and state revenues that exceeded the state maximum threshold at that time, which was $6,500 per pupil. And so, and that's Bloomfield, that's us. And so at that time, we were allowed to, again, by voter approval, make up the difference of the revenue by levying an additional local hold harmless millage on our residences. And our community supported that so that our funding wasn't decreased by essentially $3,835 per pupil. So we have the renewal. Because of the law, although it's part of the formula, we do have to take this millage out to our voters to approve. And that is, you know, going to be expiring in December of '25. We're fine for this fiscal year, but in the absence of putting it forth to our voters now, we will increase, we will incur significant election costs if we wait. So we're going to take the opportunity to do that. What we are recommending is that because of the potential for a HUDLE rollback, so I know a lot of technical language here tonight around this millage, and it is complicated. So I'm doing my best to make it as simple as possible. But under the current Michigan constitution, a school district is for, is required to reduce its millage when annual growth on the existing property is greater than the rate of inflation. So we have experienced that in the last couple of years. And what, and that's referred to as the HUDLE rollback. And what that does is it rolls back that 18 mills. And it rolls the, the rate back permanently. So we don't reset the next year to 18 mills. And in the absence of having some cushion for that HUDLE rollback, then we are essentially penalized because the stated formula assumes that we will receive 18 mills. So we do have the ability to levy more, not levy, we have the ability, the authority to request that the maximum mills to the taxpayers be greater than 18 mills. And we are making the recommendation that we will authorize up to 22 mills, but we cannot levy more than 18. And so what that does is it gives us a four-mill hedge to protect us because the HUDLE rollback is applied to the 22. So the 22 maybe becomes 21 eventually, becomes 20. We're still levying constantly 18 mills so that we receive the full foundation allowance. So based on conversations and analysis with PFM, with our bond council, we are making that recommendation, the finance committee, to bring forth 22 mills to our taxpayers. We will levy 18 on our non-homestead, and that four-mill will be, will be a hedge or a buffer for us. And then we are also bringing forth the renewal of our hold harmless millage. Currently, we are authorized up to 11.65 mills. We only levy up to 5.13 in the current year because that is based and all tied into our current per pupil allotment. So we can only levy up to the equivalent of our current per pupil count multiplied by that 3,835, and then back into that rate. And so the equivalent of that this year is 5.13. However, we are approved up to currently, right now, 11.65. And then we are going to bring to the taxpayers actually a reduction in that maximum liability to 9.65. We recognize that that isn't necessarily, that's more cushion than we need. And so we'll bring that down by two mills. And so that is the recommendation that we are bringing to tonight so that we can have that ballot language submitted to the county clerk in a timely manner to get that on the August election. I should mention that combined, the two sources of revenue does bring $34.3 million of local source operating funds to our general fund. That is 31% to the school district's operating revenue fund budget. Very significant, very material. And then the absence of that passing would require very, would, would require material changes to our educational program, to our students, because we do rely on, on a significant of dollars from these two mills.
Wow.
I know, it's a lot.
Did you, do you have that all typed out, or that was all just?
You know, I've, I've said it so many times, but I did make some speaking points today just to make sure that I articulated it the right way. I reviewed it with the bond council. They said, you've got it. All right.
Will you also be clarifying what that cost would mean to a taxpayer?
To, the, the cost to the taxpayer? So it is essentially just a renewal of the current cost to the taxpayer right now. We haven't gone through an actual calculation of using an example like homeowner value of, say, $200,000 of taxable value, but certainly as part of our campaign. And the information that we share out, and we'll be partnering with our community, our, our communications director, Karen, yeah, community service, not community service, our communications director, Karen, and her fantastic team. After the board meeting, I mean, we're going to pivot into a, an immediate communication out to our community members and our parents. And then as part of that information and the FAQs around that, I, yes, we, we can absolutely put some examples of what is that, what, some illustrative tax rates in there. I think that would be helpful.
Do we plan to have an outreach to the community over the next months before the August election? Yes.
Yes. Karen's already on top of a timeline for us and, and holding us to it. So.
And we can talk about that too in our strategic planning cell committees.
Any other dialogue on that? Thanks for bringing that to our attention to bring that up.
And this will be a voting item today in board business.
I think it's also, thank you for illustrating that this is not an increase. I think that's what folks really want to know.
It is not an increase. It, it, it is simply, it's a current tax that we've had, we've had since 1994, our voters have supported. And, and that's just a continuation. And I will mention too, we are bringing it forth. We do have the ability as a school district to bring that forth for a 20-year period so that we are not bringing this to our taxpayers every five or 10 years and giving that, we are comfortable that with that four-mill buffer, that should protect us from the HUDLE rollback for about 15 to 20 years. And we may have to revisit it down the line, but something that we don't have to necessarily incur election fees in our budget to do that. And so that was the recommendation as well of our, our bond council to put it out there. Some of our neighboring districts have just passed, I know that Rochester just passed a renewal. It's on Troy's ballot too for August 6th, and also for some, for a stretch of time, just so that we're not constantly going through this process to renew that.
So, has it been, in the past, was it renewed more often?
We had a, so this has been a 10-year, so the, this particular rate right now is expiring, and that was taken to the voters 10 years ago. We got very close to the, so I will say, we, the, we had a maximum authority of up to 20 mills. So we had a two-mill buffer at the time. And we got very close to that HUDLE rollback a few years ago. So when the prior leadership was here, we, it did actually go out to our community for a shorter period, short period fix or Band-Aid, if you will, of an additional two-mill hedge. So that's where that 22 to is essentially derived from the 20, and then adding that 22 to get us to the 10-year mark comfortably. Now, based on the history, PFM has, did some analysis of over the past 10 to 15 years about making some assumptions, if the rollback was 99%, if the rollback was 98%. We don't know that. I, I don't even have the rollback percentage if there is one this year yet from the county. But gave us various scenarios. So the greater the rollback, we have shorter period, we get closer to 10 to 15 years. And if we're closer to that 99% rollback, then we get closer to 15 to 20 years. So we didn't want to be in the same situation of necessarily having an approval for 10 years, but going out to our voters again in seven, if it is, depending on what happens with inflation. And our property tax values, so we're making the recommendation for the 20. And if we do get close to that rollback, then we may have to pivot again and make a change.
When is it, when is this expiring?
Technically, it's December of 2025. So we levy our taxes. We have a 50/50 summer levy and winter. So those rates will come to the board for official approval during the June budget adoption and, and, in our public hearing as well. And we will start preparing the draft tax rates that will go out for the '24, '25 fiscal year that is all still under our current rates. But if we wait and don't take this to our community in August or, or November, and do a special election, say next February, you know, we would be in a position that we would have to incur significant dollars upwards of $100,000, $150,000 to get on the ballot to do a special election. So we're trying to, it's a cost avoidance by doing it now.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? All right. I think we can go to recess until our regular meeting begins at 7:30. All right, we are calling to order our regular meeting, our regular session here. It's beginning at 7:30 PM. Trustee Kumar, will you please take attendance?
All members are present with the exceptions of trustees Colin, trustee Fala, and trustee Noble.
Thank you. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item four, special recognition, item A, celebrating success, The Lisa Project. And welcome up our Bloomfield Hills High School principal, Dr. Dan Hartley.
Members of the board, administration, thank you so much for having me tonight. I have the honor to bring Alex Dorf up before us. Alex, why don't you come on up while I speak a little bit about your project? Yeah, my pleasure. So I am honored to stand before you today to celebrate Alec Dorf, ABHHS senior, for his above and beyond community service. Alec is the founder of The Lisa Project, a nationally recognized program that offers support to students who are currently experiencing the pain of an ill caregiver or have lost a parent to illness. Currently, The Lisa Project works directly- Currently, the Lisa Project works directly with Michigan school districts to introduce the program to students in need. Alec has developed a community where young people are able to connect, lean on, and support other young people experiencing loss and grief. He's dedicated to ensuring that his experiences will help others. His commitment to mental health and the well-being of other young people really is inspirational. Um he started this program here at BHHS and Alec has brought the vision and drive to expand the program across uh schools all over Michigan while also being a student himself. Alec has traveled to Washington DC to speak on behalf of the National Brain Tumor Society. There, he met with Congress to advocate for better and more reasonable mental health options and for more funding for brain tumor research. He has since been highlighted in the state of the county, bringing awareness to his causes. So Alec, you are not only an inspiration here at Bloomfield Hills High, um in Bloomfield Hills Schools, but really across our state. And your commitment to your family and the larger community uh really is something that uh we are all proud of. Um so please join me in congratulating Alec on this remarkable honor. Certainly, one of the best parts of my job is to highlight all of the remarkable students we have here um in the high school and in the district. So next up, I'm going to bring up front Joseph Dillon. So Joseph, come on up, Joe. Stand right over here. I get to talk about you a little bit. So Joe Dillon has been honored and recognized by the Michigan Association of Student Councils and Honor Society as the Michigan Student of the Year for the entire state of Michigan. So this is not just a Bloomfield Hills High School honor, uh but the student councils throughout the entire state um had chosen Joe for uh really being an outstanding all-around student. So some of the highlights um is, is involvement in the Bloomfield Hills High School Student Leadership, of which Joe is um one to attend. He attended the two thousand twenty-four MASC MAHS Student Leadership State Conference in Grand Rapids back in February. Joe, as a senior, uh has been on the executive board. He's the technology advisor and was nominated for this award by his other student leadership classmates. Um his leadership experience comes in large part through the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, to which Joe's done a lot of work to support. We are beyond proud of Joe, um who is named the highest honor of awards this weekend, uh the student of the year winner or that weekend due to his involvement with the school community, his genuine nature, his leadership abilities, his involvement and achievements in student leadership class, and his overall dedication to the Bloomfield Hills High School community. So after a wonderful weekend conference, uh we could not be more proud of our student leadership team, their hard work, dedication, and accomplishments. Um and really, it, it's, it's a big deal. I, I mean, you know, students to be recognized. There are some remarkable students around the state. Uh so for Joe to be chosen uh amongst so many really speaks to um who he is as a student and as a person and the work that he has done throughout high school. So please join me in congratulating Joe Dillon. And Joe, who's, who's here with you tonight?
My father.
Uh Glenn, he's here.
Glenn, welcome. Glad to have you here. And next up, I'm going to ask a couple of our staff members to join me up front. We have Danielle Tier, one of our uh journalism broadcasting teachers, and Ron Wibbles, who's um Uncle Ron, as he's known to, to many throughout uh the BIF radio station. Um so we have eleven uh Bloomfield Hills High School BIF radio students that attended the Michigan Association of Broadcasters Michigan Student Broadcast Awards Event in Lansing. And Ms. Tier, Danielle's gonna talk a little bit about each of these students.
Hi. So when you guys come up when I talk about you? So first, we have Alex Abel um in tenth grade. He placed first place in the current event story and second place in the promotional announcement. Um Grant Dobie was in twelfth grade, first place in sports public service announcement and an honorable mention in on-air personality. Anthony Doria, first place in public service announcement and sportscast. And also honorable mentions in okay-to-say PSA and talk show. Um Kaden Kyumjian in grade eleven, first place in on-air personality. Let's give these kids some, some applause as they come up. Yeah, sorry, I'm not, I'm not pausing for them. We got Magdalena Leonard, grade ten, first place in editorial and second place in sports feature. Sydney Fortner, tenth grade. Second place in okay-to-say PSA and honorable mention in talk show. Evie Keo in tenth grade got second place in use of social media. Eugene Balski, eleventh grade. Honorable mention in promotional announcement. Abel Duchateau in twelfth grade, honorable mention in uh daily newscast and news feature. And Jaden Reich, honorable mention in sports public service announcement.
So congratulations to all of our hardworking high school radio students for their work on air and with the MAB Foundation um board members. So we are, I, I also want to make sure that we recognize our MAB Foundation Board Member, BIF Radio Teacher and Station Advisor, Danielle Tier and Ron Wibbles for leading students to success. So thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Ron. Get in for a picture.
All right, let's do this.
We'll wait just a moment until everyone clears out before we start all the comments.
They're saying they're not staying.
It's not past practice.
All right, we got twenty minutes to wrap this up.
All right, uh that concludes item, uh agenda item four. Moving on to section five, public comment. Um to submit public comment during a meeting at the Bloomfield Hill School Board of Education, please complete a comment card and present it to the administrative professional recording minutes prior to the agenda item. So this evening, we have two in the system. We have moved to a numbering system. I've got those ready to call. Uh very quickly, public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It's not a time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides that boards may place limits on time allotment for any individual comment. In addition to making public comment, you may also email the board at any time at board@bloomfield.org. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve, or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection, will be excluded from public comment. Requests for public comment are assigned a number. When your number is called, please identify yourself once at the podium. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please also identify who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the BHS Board of Education. Um public comment is limited to three minutes. Um this evening, trustee Southward will be keeping track of the time. Um and we will move on to uh public commenter number one. Please um move forward and, and state your name.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Bryn Stevenson. I am one of the administrators for the Bloomfield Hills Robotics Program. I cover the K through eight program. I'm here before you to discuss the robotics program. This last season was so incredibly rough for our elementary parent coaches, with some coaches opting to not return because of problems that our program faced. In order for us to recruit and retain volunteers, we need the support of the school district. For an effective robotics season, we need the following. We need equitable, equitable space solutions in each of the four elementary buildings. Being offered the utility closet, a space that is not up to code is just not acceptable. Teams practicing on the stage of the cafetorium with after-school programming kid zone happening five feet away in the same room, it isn't conducive to learning robotics. We need dedicated spaces that have access to working internet, wifi, cellphone coverage. Our robots are dead out of the water without working internet. And it's a safety issue and we cannot use cellphones to communicate with parent volunteers. We need clean spaces with working heat, lighting, electricity. We desperately need locking storage, which according to Plant Moran was part of the original plan for the construction at all of the elementaries. We were told by Plant Moran directly that dedicated locking cabinets for robotics were to be located in the new steam classrooms. We've since been told that those beautiful classrooms designed with us in mind are not available for our use. Additionally, no one at the district seems to be able to locate the dedicated cabinets nor the furniture, either onsite or in the furniture order for schools. Without the locking cabinets, our coaches must resort to transporting the team materials each and every week, which I can tell you takes about three trips back and forth from the car to the room just to unload and then another three trips to pack it all up. We need weekend access for robotic spaces. Teams need to be able to add additional meetings on the fly closer to competition. Weekends are invaluable since most schools' current robotic spaces are fully booked after school Monday through Friday. We need key fobs for more than just two coaches on a team. Ideally, all parent volunteers would be given a key fob since we are not a drop-off program and all parents must volunteer with the program. We need a better solution for reimbursements with the district. Coaches who've been waiting five months and counting for reimbursements is unacceptable. I also want to point out, although we are a K through eight program, we are currently not offering K through one at this time, as we currently do not have adequate space for the second through fifth grade teams. We already have trouble accommodating the teams we have and we're struggling to recruit and retain volunteers when at every turn volunteering is made difficult. We currently have a hundred and sixty-three kids in the elementary robotics program in grades two through five. Most elementaries have two teams meeting from four to six and then another two teams meeting from six to eight, Monday through Friday, so every day after school. If we opened up K through one in all four of the elementaries, we would have to accommodate another seventy-five-ish kids.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you. That's your time.
Okay, so my colleague's gonna finish my statement and I'm out or?
Yeah, that's, that's all your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to uh number two.
Having us here. My name is Mihala Cobb. Uh I'm one of the leaders for the robotics program. Um I've been a coach in FLL FTC and mentor for the FRC High School Robotics Team. I'm gonna continue Bryn's statement and then if I have time, I'm gonna say a couple of words about uh the high school robotics team. Uh Bloomfield Hills Robotics is one of the largest robotics programs, not only in the state of Michigan, but also in US. It is perplexing to me that at every turn we have to beg for space access and cooperation for the district. Does this ski program or theater kids have to do this? I could understand such a response from you if you're coming from the Boy Scout demanding accommodation, for example, but this is not us. We are a co-curricular at Bloomfield Hills Schools. I hope that you hear us and understand that we want to work with you in partnership for the success of the program and for the benefit of the kids. We have high demand from families and in fact, we have families that move to our district for robotics. We need your cooperation to find equitable solution in all four elementary buildings and quickly. I am worried if we don't have solutions prior to our opening registration in May, we might not have the parent volunteers needed to run the program and might have to turn family away, families away from the program. It is my belief we should find a spot for every child that wants to do robotics, but we cannot succeed without your help. I really hope that you hear that and work with us to find solutions. I have just a couple of words, an update about our participation at the world competition in Houston. So our team went in Houston over the weekend, as you know, um competed in front of over fifty thousand people from all over the world, from fifty-eight countries in the world. Uh we were one of the six hundred teams in the world that are competing at a world level. And I believe that we are the only uh district team that competes at a world level. So we would want to have um the respect for this, this uh great, great team. So after the qualification rounds, we were one of the two hundred and fifty-six teams, best team in the world, that competed in um elimination rounds. So we're talking about world-class uh team and we would, we would want to have the same um attention from you that you offer to the other extracurricular from the school. We made clear in the April first meeting and whatever meetings we have after prior, prior and after that, that we, um the move to Lone Pine is not necessarily the best for our program. And we want you, if it's possible, to come and talk to us and stop this move and try to find a better solution for the long term um of the program. And we would want you to come and talk to our students and see what they think and what they need in order to succeed and make sure that they compete in the same high level as they competed until this year. They have high hopes for next year. They're already pumped up for the next year. They want to take it further away, but we need your help in order to do that. So respectfully asking to pause this move to Lone Pine and give us a couple more years at Franklin and come up to a, a better solution for us as a whole program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. Uh moving on to section six on the agenda, that uh concludes public comment. Moving on to section six, um the superintendent's report.
Uh thank you. Uh first, I want to start by thanking our partners with the foundation. Uh they graciously, graciously provided twenty-four of our wonderful educators with roughly about twenty thousand dollars worth of grants this past week. Um and as we want to encourage the rest of our, all of our staff and the community to continue their support of the foundation uh because that support has a direct impact on our students. Uh the US News and World Report came out with their high school rankings this week. The media outlet used data from the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. So we're looking at data that's a couple of years old. In that, uh Bloomfield Hills High School ranked thirty-ninth in Michigan. And the International Camry ranked uh first in Michigan out of the six hundred and seventy-three schools and eighth in the country out of the seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-five schools. So we just wanted to recognize the hard work that our educators, administrators, and of course, our students uh have done. Their Robert C. J. Trob Memorial Scholarship Travel Fund was created in nineteen fifty-six by his family in memory of his deep interest in the arts and music. The purpose of the scholarship is to fund, to, excuse me, the purpose of the scholarship fund is to encourage the cultivation and expression of artistic and musical talents in Bloomfield Hills. The art and music winners will each receive prize money that must be used to explore and study in Europe before they enter college. The winners will be revealed for the first time uh at an event on Monday afternoon at the high school. Uh it'll be a very exciting event and hope anybody here is welcome to, to come and participate. Uh even the students who do not win these scholarships, many have gone on to become very successful artists, composers, and designers. Uh the district was recognized by and will receive an award from the Greater Bloomfield, Michigan Week Community for its partnership with the West Bloomfield Parks um for our project over at Pine Lake. The awards banquet will be on May tenth. It'll be there to represent the district. The annual Art in the Hills will take place on May thirteenth at five thirty at the Bloomfield Township Library. This event highlights the many creative talents of our students throughout the district. So please consider joining us in celebrating all of these art pieces and our students. Uh signing day for our um student athletes who are going on to play at the collegiate level was this past week. We honored sixteen athletes uh who are going on to play at different divisions uh in their um chosen sport. We are excited to attend the Staff Appreciation Dinner next week at the Muslim Communities, Muslim Unity Center. This event is always one of our favorites for dozens of our staff who will be uh in attendance, and we look forward to that. Bloomfield Youth Assistance invites the community to celebrate the winners of the Outstanding Youth Citizen Awards on Tuesday, May seventh at five o'clock. Uh and BHS could not be the exceptional district that it is without our partnership with the PTOC. Uh the PTOC- The PTOC luncheon, which is the end-of-the-year celebration, will be held in May, and I look forward to attending and celebrating with our amazing partners in education.
All right. Thank you for that update. Moving on to Section 7, Board President and Superintendent Search update. The Board of Education concluded first-round interviews last week, held a special meeting on Friday, April 19th, for the purpose of selecting candidates to advance to second-round interviews. Two were selected. The Board selected Billy Schellenberger, Superintendent for Clausen Public Schools, and Rick West, Deputy Superintendent for Troy Public, Troy School District, as a finalist for the position of Superintendent of Bloomfield Hills Schools. Mr. Schellenberger and Mr. West will spend a full day in the district. Mr. Schellenberger will be with us on Wednesday, May 1st, and Mr. West will be with us on Thursday, May 2nd, which it's hard to believe that dates with May on them are next week. The itineraries for those days include visits at each one of our buildings and opportunities for student-staff and community stakeholder engagement. Mr. Tim Stein of the Michigan Leadership Institute will be facilitating the stakeholder engagement sessions, which will be held in the Commons of BHHS. We welcome all who are available to come out to meet and hear from candidates. Again, Mr. Schellenberger on Wednesday, May 1st, Mr. West on Thursday, May 2nd. Meet and greet for staff is from 3:30 to 4:45. Meet and greet for community is from 5:00 to 5:45. The Board will convene special meetings on those evenings beginning at 7:00 p.m. At these meetings, the finalists will deliver a presentation before the Board conducts the final interview. The Board welcomes the feedback and perspectives from the community. We will relaunch the bloomfield.org/feedback portal. Portal, I can't, I think I'm trying to go too fast, which we, which will be open from 8:30 a.m. on May 1st and close at 4:00 p.m. on May 9th. On Thursday, May 9th, the Board will convene a special meeting to select the superintendent. Pending contract negotiations, the Board intends to take action on the contract at the May with a tentative start date of July 1st. That meeting is at 7:00 p.m. As a reminder, the interviews and all open meetings of the Board of Education are open to the public to attend our cablecast, live stream, and recorded for later viewing at bloomfield.org/livestream, on-demand via BHS TV YouTube channel, Bloomfield Hills Schools TV, Xfinity Channels 16 and 902, Bloomfield Township, City of Bloomfield, Birmingham, Beverly Hills, Bingham Farms, and Franklin, Xfinity Channels 7 and 903 for West Bloomfield Township, Keighley Harbor, Orchard Lake, and Sylvan Lake. One last comment for anyone who submitted feedback on that portal for the first-round interviews. I will tell you, we had an abundant amount of feedback in there, which was extremely helpful to the Board of Education in making their decision on who to advance. So the items that you're placing there are being reviewed, so please continue to use those portals. And that is it. Moving on to Consent Agenda, Item Number 8. In Trustee Secretary Noble's place, Trustee Kumar will work through the consent agenda.
Of course. Consent Agenda, Item 8A. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the closed session and regular meeting as of, I mean, off March 21st, 2024. Request to approve minutes from the closed session and special meeting on April 3rd, 2024. Request to approve minutes from the special meeting on April 16, 2024. Request to approve minutes from the special meeting on April 17, 2024. Request to approve minutes from the special meeting on April 19, 2024. Then moving on to Items AGHIJ. Request to approve disbursement reports as presented by Candace Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the disbursement reports as presented. Item 8H, request to approve monthly financial reports presented by Candace Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented. Item 8I, request to approve the millage rate development for the fiscal year 2024-2025 presented by Candace Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to develop the 2024 millage rates in compliance with state guidelines and furnish such rates to the appropriate taxing authorities by May 31st, 2024, in order to levy and collect summer property taxes for all BHS voter-approved millage rates for the 24-25 fiscal year. Item 8J, to request, request to approve non-resident tuition rates for 2024-2025 as presented by Candace Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education to approve the non-resident tuition rate of $13,650 for students K through 12 enrolled for the 2024-2025 year, school year as presented. Lastly, Item 8K, request to approve personnel actions as presented by Jordan Harris, Interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to Section 9, Board Business. Section A, request to award bid for physical move services. David Shulkin, Director of Instructional Technology, and Kevin Massey, Lead AP and Senior VP at Plant Moran Real Point.
Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the Board, Kevin Massey. Kevin is, as you just mentioned, from Plant Moran Real Point. His specialty is move management, and so we are utilizing his expertise this summer to help us with our transition in the elementaries with the furniture move and prepping for construction, as well as what to do with the furniture that we currently have that will we need to either sell, donate, or dispose of.
And thank you, John, for volunteering to help us move the summers. We appreciate that. So we got you on that list, so thank you.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
I move the Board of Education awards university moving and storage company for physical moving services in the amount of $335,170. The total sum covers the moving services for the 2024 summer construction work and are to be paid using bond funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do I get the $335,000?
You'd have to step down first, then we can award it to you.
Any discussion? All right.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Section B, request to approve change order to bid package T1 access controls and video surveillance. Samer Alsayed-Salman, Director of Information Technology.
I move to the Board of Education to approve a change order in the amount of $103,577 to the contract awarded to DA Central as a part of the bid pack T as in Tom 1, to include access controls and video surveillance changes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Oops, sorry.
Can we, Samer's up there, tell us about this one.
Yeah, sure. So back in April of '21, T1 contract was awarded to DA Central for all of our access control and surveillance. Back then, we did not have the full scope of the elementary school design, but now that we're there, we need additional funds to complete the project. So this will be for the secured vestibule that's going to be going in over at Lone Pine and Eastover, and then some camera changes based off of the new playgrounds or some of the internal structure as well.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And these funds would be coming out of the bond fund?
That is correct.
Was that in there?
Yes.
Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Do we need to include that in the motion? Or no?
What's that?
Okay.
The source of funds, you mean?
Yeah, do we need to state that?
No, because we're amending the, I don't believe, we're amending what we have already approved out of that fund source.
Okay, just want to make sure before we have to come back. Thank you, Samer.
Motion passes 4-0. All right. Request to approve mid-year budget revisions, special revenue funds. Candace Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
I move the Board of Education to approve the mid-year budget revision for fiscal year 2023-24 as detailed in the attachments. There is a summary of the mid-year revisions to special revenue funds on the agenda accessible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We had lengthy discussion about this in our study session, so thank you for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to Section D, request to approve resolution certifying operating millage renewal proposal.
I move the Board of Education to approve the resolution placing a ballot proposal on the general election of August 6, 2024, which Bloomfield Hills Schools voters will be asked to renew the operating millage as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we want her to present this one or no?
We discussed this at the study session, I think, in quite a bit of length. If anyone have any other.
That's also recorded for anyone that's interested.
Yes, please, say that part, yeah.
Yes. So anybody watching who would like to hear further dialogue on this, we had it at the top end of this meeting, which began at 6:00 p.m., which was also livestream and is recorded, and we went into a great discussion and great detail about this topic. So thank you, Candace, for all of your, the detail you were able to provide us on that. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to Section E, preparation for superintendent finalist interviews. We, trustees did submit directly to myself, and I've shared with the Superintendent Search Committee, made up of myself, trustee Southward, and trustee Kumar. We've each submitted two questions to review. Fortunately, each question is, all 14 questions are different. There wasn't any redundant questions, so there's no need to modify those in any way. I will get those to Tim Stein from MLI to be able to put into his package for the interviews. Outside of that, I don't think there's any other details we need to discuss for preparations, unless I'm missing something, Rebecca.
Student questions, are you going to provide those?
Yes, Paul did track down the student questions as well and provided those to me, and I will share those with the committee as well for review in case they have any thoughts on them. And then once the committee agrees that they're ready to move forward to Tim Stein, I will submit those to him as well.
Get those to me as well, because I will facilitate that part of the process.
Absolutely. I will copy on that. So outside of that, I guess the only other item, because we discussed it publicly last Friday, is perhaps coordinating visits to the candidates' current, their current districts. So we talked about that and decided that in that situation, if trustees wanted to do that, there could not be more than three, and it would be most fair that whoever could attend, one would have, all three would have to attend, or if there was two, they would have to attend both locations. This is during workdays. Trustees are going to be, you know, having to balance work and attending portions of the in-person interviews next week as well, so that might present a scheduling challenge. But I am trying to work with each trustee individually behind the scenes to sort that out and figure out if that's something we're going to do or not, and I will give an update next week at our second-round interviews on that. Any other topics that anyone needs to discuss? All right, we are adjourned.